Followed this meeting of the Michigan City City Council Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. On the roll call, Ms. Nylle? Oh, no, no, pledge. Want to say the pledge in a silent prayer?
Yeah, let's stand up, state of pledge of allegiance.
I'm not standing.
Yeah, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I am. United States of America.
And for which it stands, my nation under God. Liberty and justice.
Alrighty, Ms. Nylle, on the roll call.
Mr. Dabney?
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Mr. Mack?
Present.
Ms. Deitch?
Present.
Mr. Don Preswalinsky?
Present.
Mr. Paul Preswalinsky?
Present.
Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Ms. Zegus?
Present.
And Ms. Tillman?
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
Alright, can go on to approval of minutes. Can I have a motion to, if everybody had an opportunity to look at the minutes from last January 5th?
Motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to, made by Mr. Don Preswalinsky, seconded by Paul Preswalinsky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the minutes are approved. Reports of standing committees, are there any standing committee reports this evening?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Finance Committee met this night to review the claims. So Finance Committee put forward at 6:01 to review the claim to be presented to the council this evening. Committee members Tillman, Preswalinsky, and Fitzpatrick were in attendance, as well as Councilman Dabney and Controller Hofmaster. From the Riverboat, the claims are as follows. $4,975 to John A. Doyle and Associates Incorporated, civil areas and land surveyors for professional engineer, field party and drafting services for plat- of survey and topographic survey of East West Alley and Block 93, land companies addition to Michigan City and Laporte County, Indiana. $119,404.65 to Bank of America Public Capital Corporation for the city's energy savings group line. $487,377.62 also to Bank of America Public Capital Corp. Any energy savings loans, Energy Group Savings Loan. For a total of $492,352.62. There was discussion of purchase order reviewed in the amount of $150,000 to Michigan City Economic Development Corp. for contractual service. In regards to the Michigan City, the ESG loan obligation committee member Preswalinsky inquired about early payoffs to Controller Hofmaster. Committee member Tillman asked Controller Hofmaster about the status of any 2020 outstanding purchase orders. The committee unanimously agreed to recommend that the council approve the claims and the meeting was adjourned at 6:08. That concludes the report of Finance Committee.
Thank you very much, Councilman Fitzpatrick. To reiterate the claims docket, Fund Number 2042 Riverboat Claims of $4,975, EFT payments of $87,377.62. Fund Number 2031 Boyd Development, $0 for a total claims of $492,352.62. Can I have a motion to accept the claims as read?
So move.
We have a motion by Councilman Fitzpatrick and a second by Councilwoman Tracy Killman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Claims docket approved. Are there, there's another committee, standing committee, Mr. Paul Preswalinsky?
Angie, do you want to read the minutes since you put them together? Do you have a copy with you?
Yeah, I have a copy.
Okay. Thank you, Angie, for keeping the minutes also.
Yeah, and these minutes were, this was for the Streets and Alley Committee, Chairman Paul Preswalinsky, and committee members Dahlia Ziegus and myself. And I will say that these are, there was no action taken. So don't be alarmed or upset if all of your statements are not included in the minutes. But the, the actual meeting is on My Michigan City on Facebook. And I didn't confirm or verify if it was on ALCO yet. So, but they are there if you want a verbatim synopsis of the actual meeting. So the meeting was, it's opening, I'm sorry. Was on January 12th at 5 o'clock. And it was to review and discuss the resolution and ordinance attached to the community crossings grant and financial appropriation for the matching funds. The agenda basically was the open discussion and comments from the Planning and Engineering Department heads. Other council members in attendance were Don Preswalinsky, Michael Mack, Sean Fitzpatrick, Tracy Tillman, Controller Yvonne Hofmaster, Skylar York from the Planning Department, Jeff Wright, and Mayor Dwayne Perry. And there were citizens that were in preview of the meeting as well. Chair Paul Preswalinsky opened the meeting on Zoom and Facebook with historical background on street repair. He also discussed the financial aspect and utilizing the Tiff District Funds versus the MVH to cover the cost of the project. Mr. Paul Preswalinsky also, also discussed the Pacer rating and how old the list is and not receiving more input or communication on the timeline and selection of the streets. He also posed the question of what funds can be used to cover the cost. Angie Deitch asked if there was a formula on how the amount from MVH and Tiff is calculated. Also mentioned there wasn't enough money in the East Tiff for the other two streets and that alone could not be granted from another Tiff. Dahlia Ziegus stressed the match and the importance while sharing statistics and data on the cost of the city. Multiple discussions continued with city department heads on the project. The city can maximize the grant up to $1 million annually. 2020 didn't have many projects due to the amount of money in the MVH. We receive a monthly draw that builds up over time. We were advised that we have approximately $1.1 million through 2021 available. The next project submitted will be, the next project submitted will be about $400,000. The city will be on the hook for approximately 16% of this current project. Councilmembers Mack, Tillman, Fitzpatrick, and Preswalinsky added additional comments. I can't keep this up. Stressing the importance, the importance of council participation and process discussion on creating training opportunities within the city and possibly purchasing equipment. There was a lengthy discussion on South Cleveland Ave. Make this longer. South Cleveland Avenue. And the Service Road that are both in poor condition. Mayor Perry shared that the city does not own parts. I don't know why I can't see all this, I'm sorry, y'all. Mayor Perry shared that the city does not own parts of the Service Road and we are trying to gain control of it. The committee decided not to make a recommendation. Chair Preswalinsky and Dahlia Ziegus stressed the need to begin preparing for the next round of grants. Since Mr. Wright shared that as soon as this round is done, he has the data to begin the next round. Councilman Paul Preswalinsky will schedule a workshop in the near future. Meeting can be viewed on the My Michigan City Facebook page and on ALCO. That's the best I could do.
Well, you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
A plus, thank you.
Thank you very much, Angie.
Standing committees, on the claims docket, we also have a PO that needs to be approved and will be paid out of the Boyd Development Fund in the amount of $150,000. Does anyone from the council have any comments? Seeing there are no comments, can I have a motion to pay that $150?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mack.
Motion by Paul Preswalinsky and a second. We have a second by Simmons. On to petitions. There was a rezoning ordinance on first reading this evening on the agenda addressing this petition. There's no motion or anything.
An order, Mr. Mack?
Yes, sir.
President Mack? Yeah, there were just two motions, right, to made to pay that $150,000? We didn't vote on that?
Yes, sir, okay, all in favor of the first and second motion to pay $150,000 out of the Boyd Development Fund, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opinion? Motion carries, thank you very much, Mr. President Preswalinsky.
You're welcome.
Vote on the other one already, right? Okay.
We have a petition this evening? A petition?
Yes.
Okay, we have a petition, P-103-20, amended Hand Capital LLC, rezoning R1B to B2, Parcell 1, 7174 West Highway 20, Michigan City, Indiana, was received.
Okay, that.
Leave the better down there.
Okay, this is a rezoning ordinance on the first reading. No motion or anything we need to do on that. Ms. Nylle, about any other communications?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on January 5th, 2021 from Johanna Humbert, Executive Director of the Michiana Humane Society, regarding the appointment to the Michigan City Animal Control. Correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on January 11th from Indiana Department of Transportation to Jeff Wright, City Engineer, regarding community crossing matching grants. Correspondence was also received in my office on January 12th from Yvonne Hofmaster, City Control, regarding community crossing matching grant documents that were requested.
Okay. Alright, Ms. Nylle, would you please read our first resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only, supporting the community crossing local roads and bridges matching grant contract for 2021 and supporting the city's local match for said grant. And this is introduced by Ms. Zegus.
And does the author have anything to add at this time?
No, it's just that we went over it and it looks like a very good project. Get something done with a small input from us and a big matching grant. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, yes, it does. Does the, any other comments? Or does the public have any comments or questions? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Does the council have any questions or comments? Councilman Preswalinsky, Paul?
I was wondering, I think that Mrs. Deitch made a good point at our workshop about if the percentage could be increased on what's coming out of the redevelopment commission. I don't think that, I don't know, nobody's gotten back, nobody's gotten with me on, on that. And.
Are you talking about the question I proposed? Can you hear me okay?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is the, this is the additional appropriation, right?
This is the crossing grant, local roads and.
The resolution.
Okay, yeah, I thought that we were looking at trying to get more money out of the redevelopment commission. But I guess that if we get, I guess, or I don't guess, it's, if we got another $100,000 on the redevelopment commission, that would be $100,000 more to go to the next round. So, you know, you know, it is what it is and that the redevelopment should be paying its way. And when this money is not used in the neighborhoods, the neighborhoods suffer. And there's a lot, a lot of roads in the neighborhoods that are, you wouldn't. I went and had a meeting and got a diagram of the second ward. And I could not believe all the streets that are threes. And the only streets that I saw on the map that were a six or a five were Franklin Street and Barker Ave. Because Barker Ave was paved in the western up to Barker, up to Ohio Street last year from down by Marsh School, right by Poplar Street. Those are the only two streets that were sixes. I mean, we've got some serious problems with these streets because they're ignored in the prior administrations. And every dollar, every dollar that can be saved, used for matching money should be saved. Sure, you know, we can say that, but what I'm looking at is that we have to be conscious of the neighborhoods and what the neighborhoods need. The redevelopment commission was set up with that in mind to do infrastructure in that redevelopment area. And that's why they hold the taxes off any new taxes since it's been created in that area. So I guess it's easy to say, well, it's a good project. Sure, yeah, it's a good project. But it shouldn't be using all the MVH fund money. That is the bottom line. It should be standing alone with its money in the redevelopment commit, in the redevelopment area should be paying for the redevelopment out of the redevelopment fund. So that $400,000 could have been spread out in the neighborhoods with additional money coming from the CC Fund. So don't be misled. There could be a lot more work being done in the neighborhoods. The redevelopment commission should be taking care of their area, not on the backs of the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Don Preswalinsky, did you have your hand up already?
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I agree. I don't have a particular ward, but I kind of try to look at the whole city. And just as I mentioned with Cleveland Ave, the south end of Cleveland Ave, that falls right in the middle of a Tiff District there. And, you know, nothing was even mentioned about that. And that's one of the worst streets, I think, on the south end of town. I think we all agreed that during that workshop. And that wasn't even brought up on the list. That's why I think the redevelopment commission should be flipping the total bill here for those areas. And that, you know, we could have more money that could be working towards, you know, the first ward, the second ward, the third ward, the fifth ward, sixth ward, anywhere in town. But I think the redevelopment commission could kick in an additional $200,000. And if they could, they could fix, but they could probably fix Cleveland Ave and it would be done. So I don't agree with the resolution. I know it'll be funded, but I just think the redevelopment commission could have been, could have done more. I think the city administration, if they had anything to do with it, and I don't know how the redevelopment commission got involved with it in the first place. Nobody ever explained that to me, how that ever happened. But if Skylar approached them, if the mayor approached them, but, you know, why we stopped at $600,000 and didn't go for the whole $800,000? Maybe there was an explanation for that, I don't know. But I can agree with that. I think the redevelopment commission should pay for, you know, everything that falls within their jurisdiction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Angie Deitch?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, a couple of things that we discussed. So I did ask the question about how we came up with the numbers. But for what I understood, and what was submitted for the project is that they can only use redevelopment funds to cover, they can't cover the total project because two of the streets are not within a Tiff District that is funded. So we can't fully fund this project that way, from what I understood. I know we had great discussion about the south end and I know that Mr. Wright has taken that into consideration. But the law states that the Tiff District money is for within the Tiff District. The east side Tiff, which those other two streets are in or located in, does not have any money. It has not started, and we, that's something else we need to look at, that's another discussion. But the question came up and I asked if, you know, because I think Councilman Tillman may have reached out to the Planning Department about loaning the money from another Tiff. Well, we can't loan money from one Tiff to the other if there's no money in there to repay it back within the specified amount of time, which I think is 12 months or 18 months. So there's no money to fund those streets. So I understand, but I do believe that the Planning Department and the Engineering Department will now spend more time and hopefully receive more feedback. Because I know that Mr. Wright said, no, he just didn't, he didn't realize he needs to, you know, some of the steps he could have taken, he said if he could have done it differently, he would have. So I just think moving forward, we have a better opportunity to work with the Planning and Engineering Department to get the streets done. I think it's a learning curve for all of us. I know Paul Preswalinsky, Councilman Preswalinsky, provided us some great information a few months back. And I just think that, you know, we can't miss this opportunity and try, I mean, there's really not an option. But I agree with everything that's been said. We just got to move forward, get this money that we have now. And also recognize that the MVH Fund, that money is allocated per month. So what Mr. Wright shared with us in that meeting was that the money has been building up. So he can only spend or guesstimate on what he can to even create it. So the opportunity to use redevelopment commission money was given so that we could move forward. So I'm in support of the resolution. I just think that moving forward, I mean, we got, we have two, three years now that we got to get streets paved. And I know Councilman Don Preswalinsky brought up an idea about creating some type of fund annually that we start putting money into to move forward. But I just think for now, this is not something that we can wait on since the process is what it is and the project has been submitted. And it's only costing us 16% of the overall project. And Councilwoman Ziegus shared that with us. So I'm in support of it, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Any other comments from the council?
I move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilman Simmons. All in favor?
I will call the roll.
Oh, on the roll, yeah, this is roll call. Ms. Nylle, on the roll call? On the vote?
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinsky?
Nay.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Zegus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswalinsky?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Dabney?
As I stated, the last meeting, due to me working at the institution that is involved with the community trust, I have to abstain.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
We have five in favor, three opposed, and one abstained.
And the resolution was adopted. Ms. Nylle, would you please read our second resolution by title?
A resolution by title only determining that funding for certain outstanding purchase orders should be encumbered and authorizing the city controller to encumber such funds. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
Yeah, real quick, this is, we're having to basically move forward POs that were approved or, yeah, approved back in 2019, 2020. There's three of them out here, James Giannini and Associates for $10,565 there. There is John A. Doyle and Associates Inc. for $10,000. And then Hassan Associates Inc. for engineering services for $161,390. For total, $181,955. Since those were passed in a prior year, they have to be brought to current year and make those encumbrances that has to cross through the council for approval. So that's what we're doing tonight.
Okay, does the public have any comments? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council, questions or comments? Mr. Don Preswalinsky?
Yeah, Councilman Dabney, has all the work been done on all those bills? Those encumbrances?
I have the answers to that.
Okay, but if we're going to, if we're going to prove this, what we're saying is we're paying the bill.
No, this is the encumbering money. Encumbering does not mean you're paying the bill. The encumbering money is so that when invoices come in, the money is there to pay the bill.
Okay, alright.
It was just, Councilman Paul Preswalinsky?
Did you say that there's an anticipated bill of 100 and, how much for Hassan Associates? Was it over $100,000?
Yeah, just like it, these are the same attachments I would have thought you would ever see. $161,000, $161,390 for engineering services.
That's what I thought you said.
That was already approved and now we're just encumbering the purchase order.
Alright, alright.
That was approved back in 2020.
If my, I guess my issue is here with this. I thought we weren't using or going to use any firms. And we're going to try to keep this, this, this kind of money at as low as we could. So I guess that we're not. So we'll have to look, we'll have to make a note of this for the coming year because that's one thing that I remember the mayor talking about that we're going to get these engineering. the mayor talking about, that we're going to get these engineering monies try to keep it as low because we have Mr. Wright. So that's, I know we spent a lot of money in 2018 and 19. But yeah, I thought we were going to try to keep it to a minimum. All right, thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Chairman President Matt?
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, which invoices are from what years? I think he said 2020 and 19. I want to know which one specifically came from which year.
Mayor Perry or Yvonne Hoffman?
I can go in, I have the document right here, I have the attachment. From the Boyd Development Fund, 2019, that was the James F. Giannini and Associates for $10,600, $10,565. That's for the catwalk repairs, engineering. And then out of the Riverboat Fund, this was 2020, John Doyle and Associates, Inc., $10,000 even for, once again, for engineering services. And then 2020, Hassan Associates, Inc., that's for the 161,390. That's once again, engineering services.
Yes, sir.
Just one other question. The invoice for Hassan Association Engineering Services, what services were those from 2020?
Ms. Hoffman?
See, I can, I can, these were, these were the, what's remaining on the actual contracts that were initially signed. That does not mean that we're necessarily going to expend all of these funds. We just encumbered the full purchase orders. When we inquired with Doyle and Associates and Hassan Associates, they both informed my office that they had a couple of invoices that they still had remaining for 2020. So that's why we encumbered these purchase orders. We should have those invoices by the end of February, they both informed me. So those invoices will be coming through the council. And then the balances on these purchase orders will be liquidated and returned to the Riverboat. The PO for the engineering on the catwalk, the only reason we encumbered that is we have not seen a final inspection on the catwalk, if there is going to be one. So we weren't sure, so we just encumbered those. If this project is deemed to be closed, this purchase order will then be liquidated and returned to the Boyd Development.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
One more, one more question. At the time when those invoices come in and the funds are liquidated, or what those balances are now, can you report that to the council, please?
Oh, correct, yes, because these will come in on a docket for the finance committee. So it'll go through that process when we do get these invoices. And at that time, I can let you know if we will be fully liquidating these purchase orders or if we expect anything else to come in.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, can we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Councilman Tillman or Fitzpatrick? Or no, Councilman Dabney, I'm sorry.
Support.
And we have a second by Councilman Fitzpatrick. Resolution was adopted. Ms. Nylund, can you please read our?
You've got to take the vote.
Can I ask for a roll call?
Ms. Nylund, on the roll call. I'm reading the roll.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Prisbalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Deggus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prisbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Mack?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And now the resolution was adopted. Ms. Nylund, would you please read our second resolution by title?
The resolution by title only requesting the Michigan City Plan Commission review and consider repealing Section 17.02 in the Michigan City zoning code entitled landscaping requirements. And this was introduced by Mr. Paul Prisbalinski. And please note that the proposed resolution was tabled until the November 17 meeting, which was canceled due to COVID and was asked to be brought back at tonight's meeting.
Okay, does the author have anything to add at this time?
Well, I make a motion, do I have to make a motion to bring it off the table?
No, because.
No? Because this is, it's due date? Okay, yeah, I'd like to just say that, you know, we did discuss this earlier and I put my thoughts out there. And I think that we could, the ordinance needs to be tweaked a little bit. And, you know, I also told you that I feel that we're actually using the private sector for trying to increase, or say we have this much canopy in our city limits. And I, I do believe that we're not paying anybody for the use of their tree canopy, are we? So we're actually taking their resources and using it for our benefit. So it is, in a way, taking private property for public use. It might be a real stretch of it, but under the code, I truly believe that we are hindering development in our area. We have some big tracts of land that are wooded, that is correct. But let me say this. If you do an assessment of trees, and if you go walk through some of the wooded areas in our, in our area, there aren't too many, there aren't too many 200-year-old trees. And I, and I will, I will tell you that, with that being said, earlier, from our earlier discussion, it had me think about when they developed and when they improved Washington Street, that they, they cut down, the city had the contractor cut down a hickory tree that I could not even put my, it would take two of me to go around it. So that means that it had to be over 70 inches in diameter. That tree was there when I was a, when I was a young boy, and there was nothing wrong with that tree to put a sidewalk in. I think that this, this ordinance is hypocritical to the intent of the tree ordinance on making the tree ordinance work and planting trees in our green spaces that you can't plant a tree because you got one wire running to a telephone pole. I mean, we got to, we got to use some common sense here and not a flash in the pan. That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking to review it with the plan commission and go over it and tweak it some more. That's all that I have to say. Thank you at this moment.
Are there any other comments from the council? Any other comments, Councilwoman Deitch?
Sorry, I don't have my flags with me yet. Councilman Chris Valinsky, Paul, so have we, have we, have we had a, I couldn't attend the meeting today. Was there anything that came out of the, the meeting to, to improve it or?
The only thing that came out of the meeting is this, is that Skylar York is opposed to it, which I figured he would be, and Dr. Arnett is opposed to it because, you know, what, for, to me, I don't know why, because I'm, I'm just asking to let's review it and tweak it again and add some better things to it that may, make it work. And, and, you know, it's, I think it's a good discussion that we even talk about, the tree ordinance in general, and make these green spaces more plantable. And do some of these things that I've been talking about is removing these light pole wires and put them in the ground next to the curb line so we can plant trees in more places. But no, it's, they're opposed to it, and that's, that's what I took out of it. I'm just trying to get some, I would like to see more housing developed in Michigan City. And I think that a lot of people, they won't, they won't develop their property with, with looking at this thing, the way it's laid out. And they got a big chart in there on saying you get credit for these trees and you, and you get credit for these trees. But what did come, what I pointed out about the ordinance in there, on the development side of it, you have a buffer zone, and there's a requirement that they plant certain vegetation in that area, the buffer zone. And I think that some things could be accomplished. They say that they would work differently on the planning of these buffer zones. They could get more trees planted and, and still get more canopy up in the city of Michigan City. And also that I brought up, the fact that the tree, the tree planting program wasn't funded for over three years in the city of Michigan City. And the money that was allocated during this process is, is, I went to a tree board meeting and did the investigation through the budget process to see that there was no funds allocated for three years to plant trees. You know, I mean, people can complain about the canopy, but what we should be doing is looking at planting trees of substance and not all these ornamental trees. So there, there's a bunch of things that still need to be gone over besides this. And I wish that people would vote for it so we can keep the discussion going on and get the correct people involved with it, like the tree board and the mayor, and say, okay, are we going to fund the tree board the way it should be funded with planting the trees? And no, I'm not worried about paying for their secretary.
Because we could, other comments, what we haven't got? Let's go to.
I didn't get a chance to finish my comment, though.
Public comments, right?
Yes.
Yes, let's do the public comments first. Are there any comments from the public?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a comment.
Well, just one moment, Mr. Mayor. Oh, I guess you'd be the public. Yes, Mr. Mayor, keep commenting at the time you want to.
I am the public right now, thank you. I believe this resolution or this, the tree board ordinance is basically a pretty good document. I think that it's proactive. The purpose of it is to ensure that one of the effects of development in Michigan City is beautification of the city. We had, I don't remember the exact number, I think it was over 300 trees planted in 2020. All of them were planted in the second ward. I can't vouch for what happened before this administration came in. We are going to continue planting trees. But in the workshop, several comments were made about the development on Woodland Ave, right next to Wellness Road. That project struggled for many reasons. First, code compliance stopped the contractor because the trees that he cut down, they were burning the brush on the property, which is a violation of city code. Secondly, they were hauling debris over to our landfill, our only site over off Hitchcock, which is not allowed. And then the developer had the project laid out for nine condominiums based on a 15-foot setback from the property line, which is a setback for apartments, not condominiums. For condominiums, it's 20-foot. And because he had to come up with five more feet on each side, then it, it forced him to reduce the number of units he could build from nine to eight. And he chose not to start the work based on that. There were several reasons that that project didn't go. Most of them dealt with non-compliance issues. So I, I believe we need regulation. Regulation is, is necessary. The same developer that was, that will end up building on Woodland Ave, built suburban estates. And if you drive through suburban estates, you have attractive dwellings with very few amenities on the property, very few trees, not much ground cover. So I, I believe this is basically a, a good document. And I believe the tree board, based on the questions that have been posed by the council, will refine that document to what it needs to be. But I, I believe it's a good document. And I hope the council will, will not vote, will not approve this resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We also have Jessica and Skylar on the call. Would one or both of you like to speak here in public comment?
This is Skylar, can you guys hear me?
Barely.
Okay, I'm trying, I'm trying to talk lightly. So all of, this is.
Skylar, it's, yeah, terrible. Jessica, would you like to speak while Skylar gets his audio correctly?
Yes, can you guys hear me all right?
Very clear.
Okay, I, basically, you know, what, what the previous workshop covered was, I think this ordinance actually does a lot of the things that Councilman Paul Prisbalinski would like to see. But I think on some level, there's a misunderstanding on his part as to actually how the ordinance functions in real time and on real property. You know, one of the things we discussed was that, you know, there are a number of exceptions to what would be classified as a protected tree under this ordinance. And that has to do with the nature of the design, the layout, the location on the lot. So really, this ordinance is extremely flexible. What it allows developers to do is work with the city to, you know, establish a responsible development. And it doesn't, I think, impede or restrict development at all. What is, what it does is it's seeking to, if a developer, you know, wants or needs or feels they need to take down something that ends up being a class of, or classified as a protected tree, all it asks is on the opposite end that they replace that tree to certain standards. So if you take down a 32-inch diameter tree, it asks that you replace that with, I think it's like four or five trees on the other side. So I mean, it's extremely flexible in that regard. It doesn't prevent the removal of trees, but what it asks is that there are. There are certain standards that are upheld to, um, uh, after the fact, if that, if that makes sense.
No. Yes, it does. Any other comments from the public?
Uh, I'm gonna try this again.
Okay.
I'm still at the line.
Still kinda rough, man. Yeah. Any other comments from the public?
Bill, can you give us?
Comments from the public? Okay, Mr. York, uh, we're gonna have to try them next time. Skylar, uh, comments from the council. Ms. Dyke?
Yeah, uh, going back to, uh, uh, the comments from, that I, um, asked, uh, Paul about from earlier. I know that they had a series of workshops before. I mean, I didn't see this, um, ordinance as restrictive to. Development. Um, I guess I missed something, but reading it, it seems like they're very prudent in. Trying to, um, support, um, development and. Uh, replace trees when needed. Um, I know there've been grants and things that have been. Um, historically given to the city to purchase trees and, and things of that nature. Maybe that's why some of that wasn't funded, but. I, I will say that, that I, I think it's a pretty good ordinance. I'm not sure. Um, what else we could do differently, uh, with it. Um, I think it's a good start. Uh, I think they put a lot of time and effort in it, the, the tree board. And so, um. I'm actually. I, I'm trying to understand, um, and I don't know if Dr. Arnett, is there a, uh. I, I don't know. I don't see anything, anything that I can find in it, but I, I just wanted to say that, uh. I think it's a good, a good ordinance as it stands, so.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilman Dabney Fitzpatrick, then Councilman Preszbalinski.
Yeah, uh, real quick, this was a, an, an ordinance that we worked on. We had. Developers, we had city council, we had our planning department, we had residents. Uh, a lot of people were, were involved with this. We had the, the incoming developers. Uh, in on developing this, uh, this ordinance. It took a long time. It's a lengthy ordinance. Uh, but basically it was put out there to avoid the clear cutting of, uh, trees. And somebody comes in to develop. And when they do some type of development and they. Take out certain trees of, you know, certain diameter, they have to be replaced. And I'm gonna ask, uh, Ms. Arnett, real quick, I, I just recall that, um. We had, we wanted them to be replaced on the property, but if they weren't able to be replaced on the property, they could be put somewhere else within the city. Am I correct?
Yup.
Recall that?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay, um, so, you know, the, we, we were asked to approve this. And that would further the conversation. This is a resolution. If we. It's over with. It takes it out of the ordinance. Uh, so then it allows for clear cutting and anybody to come in to, to, in, in, in this part of the development plan. Uh, to do whatever it is they want to do with these trees. That's what we're trying to avoid.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Point order with that, I, I need to make a comment on that comment that Mr. Dabney made.
Councilman Fitzpatrick was next, sir. Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Um, well, technically, uh, Councilman Dabney hit on what I was gonna hit on about, uh. The ability to relocate trees in a different location if they weren't able to do it on the property that they were currently developing. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And Councilman Don Preszbalinski?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, I was on the council also at the time with Mr. Dabney and dealing with this, uh, ordinance. Uh, I thought it was a pretty good ordinance. You know, I haven't seen the ordinance for, uh, a couple of years, cause we haven't dealt with any issues, uh, with the ordinance. And if, and if the councilman, uh, Preszbalinski wants to, uh, send it back to the planning commission. And let them review it, you know, I don't have any problem with that. Uh, and I don't know how many council people, I know I didn't have the chance to go back and review this ordinance. Uh, you know, since we had the notice of this workshop coming up. And I don't know how many other council people have pulled that ordinance down and read it line for line. So they really know the whole meats and potatoes of this ordinance. Uh, what, what I would suggest is that, you know, we vote before we set, before we vote to send this on. To the, uh, planning commission, if we voted up or down, that possibly table it again. Give it two weeks, go back and read this thing. So the people that haven't read it, maybe you all have, I know I haven't. I would really like to go back and be able to read it and refresh my memory on all the details. I mean, overall, what I can remember, I really believe it was a good ordinance. The spirit is there. I don't think we were trying to take any public space from anybody. What we were trying to do is to improve the tree canopy throughout Michigan City, cause that's what the big issue was. And developers were, were to go and take an inventory of the trees on the property that they wanted to develop. And if any of their trees fell under a certain, uh, you know, tree. Uh, make a maple, an oak, what have you. And it was a certain size, maybe five inches, well, they had to replace it with three, uh, oak trees. In a park somewhere in Michigan City. So I, I think that was the gist of it. But I would like to, uh, I'll make the motion to table this again until the next meeting. So we all have time to at least get it and review it and study it and then come back. And really have the, uh, meats and potatoes for a yes and no vote. Cause I know right now, I don't. I have to review this ordinance. This ordinance, if I can remember, it was like 40 pages long. It's not a three-page ordinance. It's a small book. So that's what I'm doing, Mr. President. I'm making a motion to table this until our next council meeting.
But I just wanna complete comments. Uh, if there any, are there any other comments on this, uh? On this, on this subject?
Um. He moved the table, so it's it. He can't take more comments. I support it.
Once, uh, there's a motion to table.
And I support it.
Discussion that can take place. You have to take a vote.
Discussion, so the first.
No, no more counter discussion.
Yeah, after the motion is, it goes to vote. I support that also.
Yeah, I support that.
Uh, Ms. Nylev on the vote?
Who made the second on that?
Angie.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, uh, Mr. Don Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Vegas?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
You're muted, Tracy.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Did you say nay? Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Nay.
And Ms. Dyke?
Aye.
We have seven in favor and two opposed. It will be tabled until the next meeting.
Okay, the, uh. Ms. Nylev, would you pre, please, uh, read the first ordinance on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the motor vehicle highway restricted fund. To provide funding for the city's local match and unforeseen contingencies for community crossing local roads and bridges matching grant. Project for 2021. And this is introduced by Ms. Vegas.
And does the author have anything to add this evening?
Um, no, uh, I believe this is a worthwhile use for the motor vehicle fund and I would, you know, wish people would support it.
I don't say that.
Uh, does anyone have any comments regarding the proposed ordinance?
I can't read, cause it was tabled up, but.
Did you, did you say that again, Gil?
Pardon?
Were you speaking? Did you have?
Dawn's answering me a question. Um.
Uh, uh, Mr. Paul Preszbalinski?
Yeah, I was, uh, wanting to know from the author, uh, what kind of. Do you have a list of what might be, uh, the contingencies on this project?
Uh, not a list, sir, but, um, the estimate was made by the city engineer to the best of his ability. And the cost of the project, of course, will be based on the contractors that win the bid and complete the project.
Well.
I have many more questions.
An additional comment to that, what I was told is that this is like, uh. For incidentals that might come up, the project's already been bitted. So this, what, what I'm interpreting, this is more or less like a. We're, we're giving them a blank check. For whatever, whatever additional work they decide to do during the project. So my point is that if they need more money, that they're gonna, they need to come back. And not use this as a, uh, cause this is 250,000 that could be used in the neighborhoods. See, I don't, that, that's the point that I, I keep talking about is that this MVH fund. And that's just like, the money we get this month would go into this fund and the money that we get in February would go into this fund. And that by the time the next call comes out. We could have a, a sizable amount of money.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Thank you.
Uh, as, if you recall, when we talked about it at the workshop, there was still money left over from last year. Like 380 and some thousand dollars or so. And we are working on the next project so that you can tell the engineer which streets you think should take priority. Every single street here is in Michigan City, so I don't see what you're saying with the neighborhoods. And the ones that are traveled more might maybe need more attention. So I think this is a good deal for us because we are just getting a huge match from the state and, uh, I would ask for your support.
Any other comments from the council? Any, uh, Mr. President? Uh, Councilwoman Dyke?
Yes, um. It hasn't been bitted out yet. So I think what, 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 uh. The, uh, city engineer stated was that the project had been, um, already turned in and submitted. But, um, it hasn't gone out to bid yet. And, and one thing that he did say in the, um, in the committee meeting was that. When it goes out to bid, it may come in much higher or much lower than what. Um, has been. Put forward in, in the appropriation. So let's say for instance, they cut, go out to bid and it's too, it's higher. Then we can only do so many streets. Um, so I, I think there's a little bit more going on for that, but you have, we have to allocate. The funds before they can put it out to bid. So we're not quite there yet. Um, I think this is just the approximation from the city engineer on the project at this time. So we can only use the ma- maximum amount that, that has been approved. We don't have, um, um. You know, anything else right now, but it, it, it will go out to bid after we approve this appropriation. As far as I know, and maybe, I don't know if, uh, I know Mr. York is on, but his, his, uh. His sound is off, but, um, I, I don't think we can. Maybe he can put something in the chat box for us. But I, I, I'm, I'm certain that it hasn't gone out to bid yet.
Uh, Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Uh, so I do remember requesting to get the balance and we did find that there was funds still available in the MVH fund. And that there are more deposits that are coming incrementally. Is that, uh, correct, Controller of Master? And what would the next amount be or approximately? Just for the public knowledge.
We, we anticipate to receive this year approximately 753,000 additional dollars into this fund.
Uh, Councilman Paul Preszbalinski?
Additional funds come on a monthly allotment. And they have to be separated into, um. The motor vehicle highway fund, half that goes into the restricted fund, the rest is used at the, uh, street department. So. You're looking at probably what, uh, I was told about 69,000 a month. Might be the, or something in that area, be the payment to the unrestricted fund. For the MVH fund for street paving. Um. With that being said, um, and. The monies, if, if they need additional monies. Then they should come back to the council. And ask us for the money. Um. Because every dollar that's spent out of this, every dollar that's spent out of this. It is not getting roads paved in your neighborhoods. So with that being said. You need to look at these maps and I will tell you, the roads in the neighborhoods are atrocious. According to. The, uh, master map. And you have to remember that that map is three years old. So every dollar we keep in that MVH is more money that we can get paving done in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the council? Uh, seeing none, Ms. Nylev, uh, can we read this, uh, proposed ordinance on second reading by title? You're on mute.
Objection.
You're muted, Gil.
Point order?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, are, are you talking about the, the ordinance we're on right now is to read it on second reading tonight?
Yes.
You can't, there has to be, let me just explain something, if I may.
There was a.
I'm not the parliamentarian, but if I can explain something. I don't know if the parliamentarian knows the rules and regulations here on, uh, first rating to second reading to third rating. I don't wanna step on anyone's toes. What in, well, Mr. Myers is, is there. But it, not only what I was told by Mr. Jim Myers, the council attorney. When something was, they wanted, the council wanted to vote, uh. On a ordinance, three readings in one meeting, not unless. Not unless it is determined to be a utter emergency. By the city council and the city administration. Can you do that? Or are you allowed to, uh, do that? Now, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but we never did that to have three readings in one meeting. Uh, as, as long as I was the president, and I know Mr. Fitzpatrick never had three readings. Cause I was told only if it's a dire emergency, and I don't see this as being a dire emergency. So I totally object to having a second reading tonight. And you may wanna check on Mr. Myers, cause I know he's on the, uh, meeting here, but he's, he's muted right now.
Uh, Mr. Meyer, defining, uh, emergency, uh, who and how is that defined? Because I would consider this an emergency, but if that's the statute we're going by. Ms. Nylev, uh. You were on mute when you were trying to speak before.
Uh, the reason being that he was going to ask if you could have it on second reading because. We had advertised this and there was a timely fashion, so that's what he wanted to bring up to the council.
So is the question, I guess, is anyone against having it on second? I, I consider this an emergency. There's a deadline, uh, there's a. I, I consider this an emergency, there's a deadline, uh, there's a deadline for these funds to be, uh, initiated, but, uh, if it's, uh.
What is, if I may ask, what is the, what is the deadline? What is the emergency deadline to get these funds allocated?
Isn't there a deadline for the match, the matching, uh, monies?
Control Hofmaster has our.
Control Hofmaster?
Um, I'm not, I, I know the date to sign the, the agreement with the state is either at the very end of January or the very beginning of February. I, I was going to say, if we don't hold the public hearing this evening, we'll have to spend additional dollars to re-advertise this for the next meeting for the public hearing.
And how much may that be?
Um, Gail, do you, do you know, isn't it, I don't, I don't know.
I would say maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, I thought it was about, you know, between a hundred and two hundred dollars to advertise.
Councilwoman Dyche?
So, um, you advertise, this is second reading, right? Can't we have all the public hearing?
Okay, at the last meeting, when I did the minutes, we read it, we read the title. Then Sean made a motion to table it on first reading.
Whoa.
I thought that was the resolution.
Councilwoman Paul Presblewski?
Mr. Mack, uh, Jim Myers is on my phone and he is trying to get through, but somehow he's muted. And I'm gonna put him on speaker and see if I, you guys can, uh, can hear him. James?
Yeah, anybody hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear him?
Yeah, I, according to my, my computer screen, I'm muted. But in any event, you have to have the public hearing tonight because you advertised for, for tonight. Now, whether or not you can have go from after the public hearing into a second reading and third reading, uh, Don was correct, there has to be an emergency because this is an appropriation ordinance. Later on, you'll be dealing with a rezoning ordinance and those can be read one, two, three in one meeting if the council wants. But the appropriation ordinance can only be heard on, at, or at one meeting if there's an emergency, such as you'll lose out on the grant in this case, if you don't pass it now instead of on February second.
Okay, Councilwoman Dyche?
I, I didn't get a chance to finish my, my comment, but what I was gonna say is you can have the public hearing tonight, but you can call, you can call another meeting, a special meeting to get this done before that date, if we don't want to do it on February second. And that will be the only item on the agenda. That's the other option if I'm, if that's correct, um, Attorney, uh, Meyer.
James said, yes, that's correct.
All right, so, so with that being said, we can move forward with the public hearing um, and, and get through this, and then you can call, um, a special meeting and just put that as the agenda item for second and third reading, if that's what we so choose to do since we're trying to meet a deadline, um, before February, you know, before the end of January.
You're speaking of a special meeting, not tonight, on, uh, on a different day.
If, if, I mean, this is, it's a choice of the council. If someone's gonna object to doing all three, if we're, if we're considering this an emergency, if, if someone objects, I mean, that's the other option. I'm just putting the other option out on the table that can, we can do. We can have the public hearing tonight and then we can have a special meeting to do second and third reading next week or at the end of this week, today's Tuesday, do it on Friday, or you can do it Monday, uh, Tuesday, whatever. But it can be done that way.
After this meeting or during this portion now?
After. After this meeting.
Okay. Are there any objections, uh, Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Uh, I had a question, I wanted to ask Control Hofmaster if she could get the exact date to us so we know how much time we're actually, uh, dealing with to get this grant match sent out.
Yep, Skylar, do you know the exact date? I know you can't talk, but you have been chatting with us. I don't, um, I don't have the contract right here to look at, so if you give me just one moment, I can see if I can find the contract.
Everybody see Skylar's, uh, comment?
No.
Just typed in and said, I feel like I was told the end of the month, but I, I know Yvonne is trying to, that they can find us. While we're quiet, I guess my question would be, does, does the deadline constitute an emergency?
Whether you have emergency or not, you have to have the public hearing tonight.
So can we, can we move forward with the public hearing while she's getting that information on what we need to do next as far as second and third reading?
It was advertised, Jim saying, you gotta have the public hearing tonight.
So, um, President Mack?
It was advertised.
Yes, President.
Yes, let's have the public hearing tonight, do we have to make a motion or a vote on that?
No, you need to just open it up to the public for the public hearing.
Okay, well, uh, let's open it up, uh, to the public on a public hearing on this, uh, topic. Are there any comments from the public?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen, Union Street, Michigan City. Um, I see this ordinance, I guess it's an ordinance, I hope that you guys amended to where if this ever come about again, this seems kind of messy. But the, um, Skylar or, and all the other people that's involved with this will, will at least, uh, instead of just going out picking the streets that they feel that's deemed, um, need to be redone, reach out to the ward members, reach out to each one of the council members that's representing these wards and let them bring you a list of streets. Um, because, you know, we want to see streets done in our neighborhoods. And we want to make sure that something's getting done. And if my ward member can't, don't have a voice, or you're not asking him, it's like you, we still, things are being taken away from us again. As it is, the Riverboat Funds and all this other money seem like it don't never come to the neighborhoods anyway. Seem like it's always spent on police and firefighters and administration. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Public comments are now closed. Um, and now at this time, uh, Councilwoman Dyche?
Uh, just to address, uh, what, um, Mr. McCormick said. So we had a, a committee meeting the other day and a lot of those things came up and the city engineer did send us a list of all of the streets, um, and the ratings. Now, I don't know if it's all, all of the ratings, but he did send the streets with the Pacer ratings and all of the different wards last week. Um, so that, um, he could get input and he did ask input from the council members moving forward. So these were all rated, the list is a little old. Um, but he, he has, um, reached out and addressed, um, some of those items for us. So I think moving forward, you'll see some of that. And there were streets in every ward, um, that were listed. And then, um, I know several council members have been, um, and it's only the ones that are, uh, in the wards that are rated a one, two, or three. Uh, but they do have a list and I know that several council members have started driving around their, their neighborhoods, identifying streets and looking at the streets that were on that list. And my connection is going out, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilman Don Presblewski?
Yeah, Mr. McCormick, if I can respond back to, uh, your comments, uh, just to let you know that when, uh, Jeff Wright, the city engineer, sent out his first list of streets that were going to be blacktopped, I noticed that Emily Street, well, there were a lot of streets on there, but I took the opportunity to go around and ride and look at these streets and look at the sidewalks that these, uh, streets were connected to. And I can guarantee you that Emily Street, although it was gonna be blacktopped, there was no sidewalk work that was gonna be done to that. And I got ahold of Mr. Wright and, uh, I'm sure you know a lot of the residents that live on Emily Street. And that, that street is gonna have brand new sidewalks put on it. And I know that the street's not very wide, but once those new sidewalks go, go in there, if you could encourage the people not to park on the sidewalks, that will, uh, have their sidewalks last a whole lot longer than, uh, what they are right now. But just to let you know that, uh, I did talk to, uh, the city engineer and he did agree to put new sidewalks in that neighborhood.
Uh, thank you, but when I, when you said something about the sidewalks, you don't mind me real quick? Maybe we can cut back to where it'd be not that wide of a sidewalk because parking is bad over on that street. Um, you do know the city trucks go up and down Union Street and Emily Street. And no matter what, I think I'll speak for Angie and Gene Simmons on this. We want to see King Drive done sooner than later, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCormick, uh, any other council comments, uh, Councilman Gene Simmons?
Yes, just for Mr. McCormick's, uh, uh, info, uh, I have addressed King Drive and, uh, I'm trying to work with Skylar on looking at that a second time.
Okay, any other council comments, any other council comments? Uh, this is an unusual, uh, thing that we're attempting to do here. So, uh, bear with me if I have to repeat myself and ask Angie to, uh, what is the next step? But, uh, in my mind, anytime we're up against a deadline, uh, where a lot of the city's funds could be in jeopardy based on, uh, uh, you know, our performance here as a group in a timely fashion, I, I would rather err on the side of, uh, getting these things done and paid and having the lesson learned of how to do it correctly the next time. Uh, that, that's just my position on this and that's why I consider this an, an urgent issue at, right now, uh, Ms. Hofmaster?
Yes, I did find the contract. It says it must be returned, signed and returned to them in no more than sixty days from December eighth, twenty twenty.
Okay, so it.
So that's gonna be the first week of February, it has to be returned to them no later than that.
Yeah, first week of February. We've got time, so you got time.
I do have a question though, are we gonna have an issue with an objection to second and third reading at that February second council meeting and then we'll, we'll be in jeopardy? So do we need to have a special meeting next week to make sure we have second reading and no objections that occur at our February meeting?
Hoping you'd say, because that's, we, we really need that extra special meeting cause we have to prioritize this, uh, and whatever we need to do. So do we need to make a motion for the second meeting or just have Gail scheduled?
You just schedule it.
Yes, ASAP, okay, well, uh, Gail, I'll be calling you, uh, after the meeting tomorrow and we'll, uh, we'll get that scheduled and announced. Um, we're on to the next one then, right?
I, I would like to make one, uh, parting comment, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um, what was said earlier by Mr. McCormick about, in my, uh, in, uh, Don, Councilman Don Presblewski about getting that sidewalk work done? Well, I, I want to reiterate that the monies on this contingency fund, see, that's in the, that's in the Tiff District. And now that's additional costs and that should be covered by the Tiff District. So I have yet, to this date, heard anything about the administration talking to the Redevelopment Commission about adding up some money. See, I think, now, to be fair, is I think the Redevelopment Commission should addy up some money and figure out, well, where do you see that you're, you're gonna have a problem? Because they're supposed to already have been, as they plan the project, they're supposed to be looking for utilities, damaged, uh, sewer and drainage lines and water lines. So they already got these roads picked out, so they should darn sure should know where they're gonna have problems. That, that's my point I want to make here on this, uh, contingency fund.
Thank you, sir, and lastly, Skylar York, who, uh, cannot be heard for technical reasons, uh, writes, uh, we will check out Martin Luther King within the next week and keep in mind the Singing Sands Trail will be installed along the southern side of Martin Luther King as well. We probably want to wait for the installation of the trail, then repave the tree, then repave the street. Um, thank you, Mr. Skylar, for elaborating on that. Um, all right, I don't want to close the wrong thing here. So do, uh, we just go on to the next one or do we, okay, uh, Ms. Nylev? Um, can you please read the second ordinance on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending the zoning map of the city of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana, to rezon property currently owned by MHP one LLC from R one B to B two. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Mr. Simmons.
And does the author, authors have anything to add at this time?
Yes, this is, this has been approved by both, uh, the planning commission and rezoning commission. Uh, and it's compatible with the city comprehensive plan.
Did you, uh, could you have your hand up, Mr. Dabney?
Uh, I'll just make a quick comment on that. Yeah, like I was gonna say that, uh, Gene already said this was sent out of the planning commission with a favorable recommendation. Um, and this is just to allow the expansion of storage area there. The, the, where the storage is gonna be extended, uh, there's really no room for any new development out there. Uh, there's trees and water, these that, that surround the, the property itself. So no new development's gonna really be able to happen out there. So to be able, to extend what they have currently, uh, makes sense. And, and like, uh, Mr. Simmons said, Councilman, uh, Councilman Simmons said, you know, it, it fits into the, the overall plans of the city.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Dabney, are there any comments from the public?
Uh, yes, if, if, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Mr. Anthony Novak?
Yeah, just briefly, I just want to introduce myself, Anthony Novak. I'm an attorney with Newbie Lewis Kaminsky and Jones in La Porte. I, I represent the petitioner here. Uh, first of all, I want to thank, uh, Councilman Simmons and Councilman Dabney for sponsoring this ordinance. Um, we have gone through, um, uh, the plan commission, uh, got a favorable recommendation to rezone. Um, actually, we've simultaneously gone to the BZA, um, and, uh, submitted our special exception request, which has been approved condition on ultimate rezoning from the council. Um, there have been public hearings, I'm certainly willing to go through, um, a previous presentation or ask, or answer any questions that you guys have, but in the interest of time, I'll just field any questions you have. One other point, just in case it's brought up, and, and Mr. Attorney Myers alluded to it previously about potentially three readings for this one tonight, and I did request that of Councilman Simmons and Dabney. But I actually spoke with the client, uh, the deadline that I thought was looming is not. So simply going through on first reading tonight is, uh, sufficient and I'm here for any questions, if anyone wants to ask them.
Um, I should, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Dyche?
Um, so, Novak, would it, um, would it be, if we have a, a special meeting? I mean, what is your, what is the timeline? Cause we're having a special meeting for second reading for another ordinance. So what is, what is the actual timeline?
Honestly, if, as long as this could be approved, probably about middle of February, we would be fine. Honestly, as long as this could be approved, probably about middle of February, we would be fine. We have a financing component to the transaction. Where essentially, once the rezoning is officially done, the deal has to close within five days of the rezoning. My clients weren't expecting that we were able to get through this quickly enough like we did. So when I said that we could potentially get it done tonight, they asked if we could just extend it a little bit. So while I appreciate the question, Councilwoman, if honestly, if we just went to the February 2nd meeting on second reading, that would be fine.
Councilman Don Prespolinski?
Yeah, Mr. Novak, you say mid-February. We have a meeting February 16th. Is that too late, is that too late to get this approved or is that still okay? That's our, that'll be our third meeting, our third reading on this will be February 16th. Can you wait till then?
I believe we can. If things, just as a question, if things were to change, say, come February 2nd, meaning Councilman Prespolinski, at that time, if I learn that the closing date was before February 16th, would it be okay to ask for second and third reading that night? Or is it simply just, okay? I think, but to answer your question, yes, I think February 16th would be fine if we hit all three meetings.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public?
Yes, Rodney McCormick again, 617 Union. Can someone tell, can someone tell me who is MHP? Don't want to have no conflict of interest. I mean, this, this, this city council has been very transparent. I just want to know, if you don't mind, who is MHB, MHP? I'm sorry, forgive me. Thank you.
I'm not sure if this is a question and answer for me. I'm willing to provide an answer if the council would like.
Yeah, please, please do so, Mr. Novak.
I represent the buyer, Han Capital. MHP LLC is just simply a private owner who owns this. Through context, I figured out MHP is an acronym that stands for Mobile Home Park. There used to be a prior mobile home park on this, on this, on this property. That's no longer in existence. So the private owner of this property listed for sale. And my client is the contingent purchaser. So those are the two entities involved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Public comments are now closed. Any council comments or questions? Mr. Dabney?
Yeah, I'm just asking, everything that comes up, we're sending it along as if, you know, we're not prepared on the date that the stuff comes up. A little concerning, every time something comes up, we're pushing it to a special meeting, we're pushing it to the next meeting. Like even going all the way back to the first ordinance, we were talking about the cutting of the trees. You know, people haven't read it. We need to give people time to read it. And, you know, we had to stop this council meeting schedule a long time ago. So I'm starting to get a little concerned that we're, everything is being moved because people haven't read it. They didn't have the information. And I'm just trying to figure, what are we doing?
Yeah, I share your concerns, but we just got to get better. And there's absolutely no way around it. When we are able to expedite things as a group, that'll happen. But until that time, you know, I also would like things to be a little more urgent in certain areas. But just one vote, Mr. Prespolinski?
Yeah, I'll respond to Mr. Dabney since I was the councilman that asked to have the tree ordinance tabled. The reason being is because we had this workshop scheduled here this evening. And we didn't know, I didn't know exactly what Mr. Prespolinski was going to be talking about in that tree ordinance. So I didn't have a chance to read it yet. So if you can recite it verbatim, Councilman Dabney, you're a better man than I am. But I just want to go back and review it. And it's apparent to me that other council members also didn't have a chance to read it verbatim. So now we're going to do that. So that's it.
Okay.
If you want to call me out, just call me out, Mr. Dabney, if that's what you're doing here this evening.
Councilwoman Dykes?
All I was going to say is that I'm confident in the council that we have. These ordinances and moving second and third readings is not our fault. If we receive the information sooner, we can do first, second, and third reading in order instead of trying to force a first, second, and third reading at a council meeting. That's not normal. I don't think we're doing anything out of line. I think we're doing our jobs. First, second, and third reading, I've never seen that done before. We, you know, second and third reading, you know, we do it, but again, we can object to that. One objection, and then we're out of sorts. So I think having the special meeting was, is done so that we don't get ourselves in a bind at a council meeting with the second and third reading and one person objects. So I think everything is in order. So I'm not exactly sure, yeah, where that's coming from. But I just think that as long as we get the information, even with the streets and alleys and the paving, you know, they had 60 days. If we had got it 30 days ago, maybe we would have more time. We just get, we get punched up against these deadlines because of circumstances that aren't within our control. If they could have got it to us sooner, maybe we could have gotten three readings done in January. But we didn't. So, you know, I'm confident in the council and what we're doing and how we're proceeding. It just takes time for us to get adjusted, that's all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dykes, and I agree 100%. Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, so I wanted to address Councilman Don Prespolinski. If I want to call him out, just call him out. This is not about calling you out, since you brought that energy this way. I do have to say, you were the original councilman who was fighting for the protection of the trees with the diameter of trees. So verbatim? No, I can't read it word for word, but I can tell you exactly what was in it and what it meant. If somebody was going to.
I got a point of order. But I want to.
Somebody was going to, he's not going to interrupt me. He's not going to interrupt me.
This is not.
He is not going to interrupt me. He's not going to interrupt.
Caleb, can you just mute everybody? Can you, can you just mute everyone? This is the thing that, I'm going to just say this right now, since I've got everybody on muted. I was trying not to go to this level in our meetings. But our next meeting, we will have the three-minute rule on speaking. We have got to get better. I do not want to entertain back and forth arguments that we all know aren't germane to the subject, the person. We've got to be better than that. This is partly why, it's what Angie said, is deadlines, but partly us. And we've got to be better. Nation needs to be better. We need to be examples of how to speak to each other. So if I, I'm going to talk to Attorney Meyer. And the maximum control that I can begin to exert over this type of behavior, I thoroughly plan to do it. Especially during these Zoom calls and going forward in the in-person calls. We will stay germane to the subject. We will stay professional. And we will keep our personal things on contact, on telephone calls and texts to each other. Caleb, you can please open back up the floor. We'll entertain any continuation on this, if there is any. But these are the type of things that really get to me as a chairman or president of this council. Any other comments on this subject, on this subject? Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Ms. Nyla, would you please read the third ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending section 70-101 and division 3 of chapter 70 of the Michigan City Municipal Code Regarding the Police Merit Commission. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
And does the author have anything to add at this time? You're on mute, Mr. Prespolinski. Should be a little button right at the top right corner of your box. There you go.
No, I'm satisfied with the language in the ordinance. And, you know, what we're trying to get done here is make the police commission more transparent and more, have more depth on the commission itself with five members. And I really think that it's a positive thing moving forward for the police department. Thank you. And the city of Michigan City also. Thank you.
Does the public have any questions or comments regarding this item? Any public comments?
Rodney McCormick again. I think transparency is good and it's a must, considering the last administration and the things we went through. So, thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Public comments are now closed. Does the council have any questions or comments? Councilwoman Dykes?
So this is the ordinance, right, with the, this is our ordinance with the background checks and then with the expansion of the police commission. My only concern with the expansion of the police commission, and I'm just going to say this, I'm not for the expansion. And the reason being that first, I believe that we would have two selections. But statutory, Mr. Meyer, Attorney Meyer shared with me that statutorily with the state, the fire depart, I mean, Fire Department Board, the police department would get select, two selections. And the mayor would get two selections and we would get one selection. I'd rather, I'd rather go, I'd rather have a third of that selection. That's just my personal opinion. And I know that Police Chief Campbell has come up with, he has an advisory board. I need to follow up with him on, you know, who those members are with that advisory board. But I just, I'm, transparency, I don't know what that, if that gives us that or if it creates a conundrum just with, if we all had two votes, I would feel better. But because we don't, I'm not really for it. I thought we had more input on, you know, how many. But statutorily, the mayor gets two, can get two, the police can get two, and the council will only get one appointment. And I think it's very important that we keep our singular vote, even with the other two entities. And that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dykes, and I'll jump in right on that one. And I agree with everything Angie Dykes just alluded to there. My first concern was the dilution of our ability to influence the police merit board. And I also am really confident and hoping that the direction that the Chief Campbell is taking the police department can get a bit more latitude before we begin to make changes to it. Are there any other council comments? Councilman Paul Prespolinski? You're on mute, sir. You're still on mute.
I would just want to say that the transparency is this. Right now, under the current ordinance, these gentlemen that are hiring your police officers, that are disciplining your police officers, do not have to take a back, get a background check. Now, I believe that that is an important and crucial element of the ordinance. Because the police officers need to look at that commission with, it has to have some high standard. Because that's the board that hires, fires, and promotes. Now, with that, with that being said, we, I cannot change what state law says. That has to be done at a higher level. What I'm looking at trying to do is you're going to have five members. So that means that there will be more flowing of discussion and ideas there. It will not be two people running the show on that board. It'll be more, it'll be more open discussion and more input. I'm not saying there'll be a debate session, but I think that people will have to explain a position better if they want to discipline or fire somebody. And, you know, Angie, I understand what you're talking about because I thought it would be two, two and two. But that is, this is what was researched and that's what's there on the statute. And if we want to change it, well, we'll have to talk to our legislators and see if we can get something done. But with that being said, I don't know if we could get something done. Because, believe it or not, the police and the firefighters have a lot of influence in Indianapolis. Okay, that's just, that's just how it is. But I think it's a good move and get these background checks on people that are on the commission. I think it'll help a lot. I really do with the department. And actually, I think it'll make the chief's job a lot, lot more easier.
Are there any other council comments? Any other councilman?
Yeah, so I do agree with the, what the ordinance is trying to do as far as getting the transparency. I definitely think that those that are holding the police accountable should be held to that very same standard themselves. But I also don't agree with giving up a third of the control of the commission. If we have someone that's appointed by us to represent our position and that's diluted by two fifths per se, or instead of having a third of that, but we have a fifth of it. I think that with, without having that part of it in, I would be in full support of this ordinance going through. Because, I mean, there should be a standard that the people setting the standards should be held to. So I don't know if Councilman Prespolinski would be entertaining taking that part out and submitting it with, with the rest of it. But if that was the case, then I could definitely be in full support of it.
Councilman Prespolinski?
I'll tell you exactly what I'll do. I will contact the chief and get his opinion on it. Because he's the guy that's going to have to work with it.
Absolutely.
Okay, is that fair?
Fairly.
I know that if, if, if we go through to third reading, then I don't think we'd be able to make amendments. We'd have to do it.
I'm going to, you know what? That's a good point. I'm going to ask for amendments without objection. So we'll, we'll go for broke.
An objection, you're done. Councilman Simmons?
Yeah, I also feel that I would be in agreement with the background checks. But as far as the number of commissioners, not unless everyone can have two, two picks, you know? We have to have equal picks.
Councilman, Councilwoman Dykes?
Before I move to table this, so that we, because I don't. Before I move to table this so that we, because I don't know if anybody will object to third reading or not, but I see that Chief Campbell is on the line and may be able to add more information to this ordinance.
Chief Campbell?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I appreciate the commentary on getting our input. I think it's very, very important. And I have no issue with being transparent in regards to background check, checks for the police commissioners. I think it's a necessary thing. No issues there. Should be a part of our transparency. I think though that the commissioner's job is a very taxing job. And there, the, you know, I think everyone should remember that the city should remember that, that basically is the oversight of the Police Department. Where the mayor gets a pick, the FOP gets a pick, and the city council gets a pick. One of the things I wanted to do to add to that was to compose an advisory board, which is still in the making for those areas where we might have blind spots. Because I think it's important to hear from the public and I wanted to get a variety of different people from, from every realm of life to be a part of that advisory committee, which would be a two-fold situation where I would be able to relay information to the public about why the Michigan City Police Department does what it does, but also get a second pair of ears and ground to the floor of what's going on in different areas and different stakeholders in our city. But to go back to the original point, I have no issue with the transparency. And we would be willing to do what was legal according to standards as far as what we can do on a background check. No issues there.
Thank you, Chief Campbell.
May I have one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I think it was important, I think it was a mistake to remove the secretary for the commission, the Police Commission. That is, they have a very, very big job to do. And that's gonna tremendously hinder the speed at which we can get officers hired and the operations. And I hope that the council reconsiders that, taking away that position because it's very, very important. Those are primarily part-time people. And it is a very, very big job. And taking away that secretary is going to slow down the process tremendously. We're already behind the ballgame right now. And that's gonna hinder things. It takes about a year to get a person from the application process to be, from being hired to being street-ready. And so we need to have a very good system and structure in place, which includes a secretary to expedite that process to keep our city safe. So please keep that in mind. And going forward, I'm very open to any questions that you may have about the Police Department. I've always been very transparent. And I hope that I'm not being judged by some other standards other than what I presented unto the city, unto this council, since I've been made the chief of police. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Councilwoman Deitch?
I had a question for Mr., for Chief Campbell. So I know that the Police Commission meets during office hours, during business hours. Is there someone that's administrative, in administrative role that can assist with that? Or I know that we have some assistants and some secretary positions that can take on that, that, that task? Because I was gonna ask that of the Fire Mayor Commission as well? Since, you know, I know the Police Commission meets during business hours. So I was wondering, is that something that perhaps could be done?
No, no, ma'am. We're stretched as it is right now. One of the moves that we made to help out the city budget was we eliminated a secretary's position already. So the secretaries that are in place are doing double duties and they're being trained to learn each other's position and they're maxed out right now. So that absolutely would not help, that would hinder our department after we allowed, we gave back a position to the city because one of our secretaries was getting ready to retire.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any other council comments? Any other council comments?
I do have a question. Should I move to table? Is, or will there be any objections? I know Paul, Mr. Paul Presmelinski, Councilman Presmelinski stated, would there be any objections to amendments on third reading? And I don't know what the pleasure of the council is if I should move to table. But I know that some people are very strong in opinions about amendments on third reading. Will there be any objections? I don't object to it, but there could be. And I'm just trying to streamline the process.
Well, make the motion. I'll second it.
All right. Well, I'll move to table. I'll move to table.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Are we putting a date on that?
Next meeting.
Okay, all right.
I'll help you. I'll make the changes.
No problem. Thank you.
Ms. Nylup, will you read the, uh, will you please read the first ordinance on third reading by title only? There we go.
In ordinance on third reading by title only, amending the rules regarding eligibility for vacation bonus. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Does the author have anything to add at this time?
No, not really, other than as has been stated before, the purpose of me wanting, seeing that there was a need for bridging in the vacation bonuses was because the language that was currently in the policy was very vague. I do have a question though for Attorney Meyer, and that is, will there be a code number, a code, a number, section number provided so that this could go into the MUNICO book?
Yeah, the clerk will send the ordinance to the MUNICO purser.
Okay. Other than that, President, I have no further comments regarding the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tillman. Any comments from the public? Any comment from the public? Any comments from the public? Does the council have any questions or comments? Does the council have any questions or comments? Okay, are we voting on this now? This is the third reading, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Nylup on the roll call?
Make a motion to adopt. Motion to adopt support.
Made by Paul Presmelinski and a second by Mr. Fitzpatrick?
I think Don made the motion.
I made the original motion, Mr. Red.
Motion by Don Presmelinski and a second by Paul Presmelinski? Ms. Nylup on the roll call, on the vote?
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Vegas?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presmelinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Presmelinski?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, Ms. Nylup. Can you please read the first ordinance? On third reading by title only.
Second reading.
Second reading, is it? First? We're talking about vacation bonuses, right?
We're talking, next is longevity.
Oh, yeah, I went too far. Sorry.
Okay. Okay. In ordinance on third reading by title only, amending the rules regarding the eligibility for longevity bonus. And this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
And does the author have anything to add at this time?
Um, no, I would just convey the same applies for the vacation bonus with the longevity bonus of bridging in longevity. And also as Attorney Meyer's indicated that this will also be submitted for the MUNICO book.
Yeah, are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Are there any council comments or questions? Ms. Deitch?
I move for adoption.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilman Don Presmelinski. Ms. Nylup on the...
Keep calling me Don.
Michael, call me the second.
I could've sworn it boxed it up.
We need the flags.
Yes, there you go, right.
There you go. Okay, Ms. Vegas?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presmelinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presmelinski?
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And motion carries. Before we go on to the next one, I've been requested to take a three, five-minute break. We're at two hours right now. Would we need a motion to do that? Or just, you know, we're announcing? It looks like I can just announce. Yeah, I will declare that we will take a five-minute break for emergency.
You? I gotta go pee.
How long will it be more? Five minutes?
Yeah, we speak on a half hour.
We got about three and a half minutes.
We got one and a half minute left.
That's all we've got? They'll make it a half fatal.
That's what I was thinking about. We've got three and a half minutes to that break.
And we're still on TV, so.
Yes.
I'm sure the public don't mind a quick intermission.
Sure they've taken one. There we go. We got Mr. Dabney back. Just waiting on one more. Okay, I believe we are now back at 100%. Ms. Nylup, will you please read the third ordinance on the third reading by title only?
And ordinance on third reading by title only, amending municipal code section 2-457 as amended by ordinance 4548. as amended by ordinance four, forty-five, forty-eight, commission of social status of African-American males. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman and Ms. Deitch.
And does the author have anything to add at this time?
Sure, um, this was to, um, to cor- correct a, a few items that we had, um, when we passed this, um, previously. Uh, this was the ordinance that, uh, was vetoed because there were some discrepancies. So this, these amendments were to accommodate and to fix and resolve those issues. Um, we also replaced, um, the Hope Center with, um, the Michigan City Area Schools in that, and expanded the board, um, so that we could, uh, resolve the conflict. So now the mayor will have seven appointees and the council will have eight. And, uh, um, that's the gist of it. So now we'll have a residential appointment and the mayor will also have an appointment that, um, comes from higher ed or workforce development. And that's pretty much, uh, the changes in the nutshell.
Thank you very much. Are there any, uh, public comments at this time?
Yes, Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Um, I think what you guys are doing with the ordinance is a good, it's, it, it needs to be done. I, 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 there's no doubt about that. But I know a lot of you on the board, on this commission, I, I, on this council, and I know that you guys are all, every one of you are about being fair. And I just have one thing I say, I want to say, and I hope I don't offend anyone or the authors of this ordinance. Um, I think that just adding the Michigan City Area Schools, it should be an open process, just like, just like I had to fill out application. I think you should give everybody a chance, any organization or group that wants to come in and put their name in there. Um, I think that should be a chance for everybody to get, um, especially with the things that I've been going through, just trying to get on any kind of board. So I just think that opening the process up to everyone is the right thing to do. And, um, just considering that, um, the vote, whatever vote you guys make, it ain't never for you. It's always for the people and it should always be for the betterment of the people that live here. So, and that includes anybody in any organization that calls Michigan City their home. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any public comments? Any public comments? Uh, does the council have any questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Deitch?
Um, the only thing I'll add, as I did mention that, uh, Mr. McCormick to, um, Marty, I had, uh, mentioned, uh, the Drifters as well, um, and, uh, they had already reached out. So maybe that's something like they did this year, um, that they, you know, contacted organizations before the end of the year, every year, to make sure they're still wanting to be, um, included. And if not, um, put an open call out to organizations who might, um, want a seat on, on that, uh, on that board. I mean, I think that's, that's a fair statement, so, um, I, I move for adoption.
Second.
Mr. President? Uh, just a quick, quick, quick response, please.
Uh, go ahead, Mr. McCormick.
It's just that I, I, I feel like I'm between a rock and a hard, hard place right now. I just think that, um, it is, it's important that we, we just let other organizations get a chance and, and we already, I'm not trying to make no sour grapes about this or get anyone mad at me. But if I'm not mistaken, the chair for the social status is also the vice, the vice president of, um, he's the president of the, of the school board. So we got double representation, uh, from the, from the school system, um, which has two votes now. And it's kind of like going back to the police marriage stuff. It's, I just, to me, it just seemed like it's a conflict, um, especially with the way that they're doing it far as bringing in assistant superintendent instead of bringing someone in that's retired. Thank you, and I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Okay, we've had a motion by Councilman Deitch and a second by Councilwoman Tillman, if I'm correct. Um, Ms. Nyla on the vote?
Mr. Paul Preszwalinski? Mr. Paul Preszwalinski? There you go.
Aye.
All right. Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preszwalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
And Ms. Zegas?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Okay, uh, on to new business. Uh, twenty-one council committee assignments. I've gotten a few, uh, changes, uh, that we're not gonna do all of those, we're just gonna do the, uh, following. Um, we're gonna ask for nominations. Um, and I, and I guess I was asked, is it possible to, it's because the, the premise here is no one's changing on these boards, uh. I, I don't believe. And if we have no other, uh, interests in these nominations, is it possible for me to, uh, just, uh, put up a motion to agree with the existing board people on these, um, committees to continue? Is there verbiage that I can put that in, uh, Gail?
Point, point, point of order.
Yes, sir, Ms. Nyla. But Ms. Deitch?
Uh, so, so are you trying to get, um, a, a affirmation that everybody, everybody on here still wants those same positions and nobody else wants them?
Yes, I have, I have no communication on any of that are different. And then everybody seems to be happy with the, uh, places they're at on these.
Since these are voting statutory, I think we need to, even if it's the same person, I think we should nominate them.
Okay, let's do that. Okay, then we, uh, have nominations for the animal control board.
I'll do it if somebody nominates me.
I nominate Mrs. Councilwoman Deitch to the animal control board.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Hold on, who was the second on that?
Uh,
Don.
I did. What, Don did?
Don.
Don did.
Okay, if we could, let me in.
Okay, ready, Gail? All right, uh, ask for nominations for the planning commission. And the current person on the kit, planning commission is, uh, Councilman Dabney. So, we have any nominations, uh?
I'll nominate, uh, Councilman Dabney.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Oh, I bet.
Yep, could you say it again, Mr. Dabney?
Sorry about that mic, what?
Uh, all in favor of, uh, the, the, uh, Councilman Dabney, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Most, um, congratulations, Mr. Dabney. Um, next up is, oh, there it is, right there. Next up is the Public Art Commission and the current, uh, commissioner?
Don Preszwalinski.
Is, uh, Don Preszwalinski?
I nominate Councilman Don Preszwalinski to serve on the Public Arts Committee.
I second.
Oh, thank you very much.
All in favor?
Hold it in, yeah.
All in favor, signify by the aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, sir. Uh, we're asking for nominations on the social status of African-American males. And, uh, the commissioner is currently Councilwoman Tracy Tillman.
I nominate, uh, Councilwoman Tillman. Second.
Nomination by Sean Fitzpatrick and a second by Mr. Simmons. All, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Tillman. Um, nominations for the solid waste management and currently done by Mr. Councilman.
I'll nominate Councilman Don Shibidinsky to the solid waste management board.
Thank you.
We have, uh, uh, nomination by Mr. Paul Preszwalinski and, uh, Councilman Jim Simmons with a second, all in favor saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations again, Mr. Preszwalinski.
Yeah.
Tree Board. Uh, nominations for Tree Board. Current, uh, Tree Board is Councilman Daya Zegas, Zegas.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Daya Zigga, Ziegas.
I'll second that.
You almost zigged.
I'm sorry. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations. And, uh, lastly, uh, nominations for the Urban Enterprise Association, which is currently, again, Councilman Tracy Tillman. Uh, do we have a nomination?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Tracy Tillman.
And I second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Councilman.
Whichever way you want to go.
Uh, nomination by Councilman Paul Preszwal, yeah, uh, second by Councilman Deitch, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Congratulations again. Uh, board and select committee, uh, committee ones, you'll talk about the vote, nominate somebody, so, uh, right now, yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, I'll let, I'll let you finish, uh, President Mack.
No, you go ready.
Uh, I just wanted to know, if there's no objections for, um, under the new business for, um, nominations, I would like to, um, renominate or nominate Mr. Rodney McCormick, who originally, um, was the council nomin- nomination, um, in twenty twenty, and to renomin- to, um, nominate him again for the social status of African-American males on behalf of the council.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, motion, uh, by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman and a second by Councilman Paul Preszwalinski?
Before you do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Just to make sure, because I, I, I know that he submitted a form. There weren't any other forms turned in, I don't think. I just want to make sure. All right, perfect.
Okay, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. McCormick. Uh, board and select committees, uh, FYI, Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of members of the common council regarding the appointment of Paul Foreman as a member of the Michigan City Board of Cemetery Trustees, term beginning immediately and expire December twenty-third. Uh, there's, uh, no objections, we'll take the vote this evening on the mayor's request. All in favor, favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Foreman. Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the members of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his reappointment of Ms. Bunny Demke as a member of the Michigan City Board of Cemetery Trustees, term beginning immediately and will expire December twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. If there's no objections, uh, we, uh, can take the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Demke. Uh, Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the mi- members of Michigan City Common Council regarding his reappointment of Ms. Janet Blatche as a member of the Michigan City Public Art Committee, term beginning immediately and it expires March first, twenty twenty-four. No objections, we'll take the vote. All in favors, uh, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Blatche. Uh, Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of members of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his appointment of Mr. Aaron O'Reilly to the Michigan City Human Rights Commission, term beginning immediately and will expire November second, twenty twenty-four. There's no objections, we will take the vote this evening on the mayor's request. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Uh, aye.
Opposed, congratulations, uh, Aaron O'Reilly. And lastly, the common council has one appointment to the animal control board, being a member of the Board of Directors to the Michigan City Humane Society. Term begins immediately and expires on February first, twenty twenty-four, incumbent is Karen Edwards. If there's no objections, we'll take the vote this evening on the mayor's request. Everyone signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, congratulations. I, uh, skipped over, uh, one piece of, uh, business that I wanted to, uh, bring up myself, um, on boards and commissions. And it was the creation of a, uh, Boards and Commission Development Oversight, um, that would be the name. Uh, the premise and the purpose of this board would be-
Select committee.
A select committee, I'm sorry. Yes, a select committee, thank you. And the purpose of would be to supply training opportunities, uh, professional development, and, uh, a bit more direction and cohesiveness, uh, to all of our boards, uh, our select committee boards, and, and make some judgments on, uh, we, we, I really want to see some attendance numbers, I really want to see more participation, and I really want to see some accountability. And I really want to see us involved in developing these boards into huge assets. Not that they all aren't, but I think we need to have our fingers on the pulse. And, uh, I, um, and asking, I don't know if I need to put the chairman or how we put this to a vote, um, at this point in time, but I, I would like to create this committee, uh, Mr., uh, that's your attorney, Mike?
Yeah, you'd have to, somebody would have to move to create the committee and then second and the vote.
Okay.
I'll do it.
Okay, we, yes, sir, Mr. Paul Preszwalinski?
Uh, Jim, can, can he create a ad hoc committee on his own?
Well, ad hoc, you, you were gonna call this one a select committee?
Yes.
And the select committee has to decide how, who, how many members, who's gonna be the members, and who's gonna appoint the members?
What's the easiest way?
You're, you're talking about a piece of legislation then, right?
Yeah, it's a resolution.
Yeah, let's do the easy way.
The easy way is ad hoc, and the president can do that.
So I have just done that and I can appoint, uh, a, appoint the, um, the board member that's in charge of that, right? So.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
All the members.
And forming an ad hoc committee, uh, and it's gonna be called the, uh, Boards and Commission, Commission Development, uh, you know, um, and, uh, I'm appointing, uh, Angie Nelson to that, and, uh, it, the, the logic is, uh, as I stated before, um, I'm all for training and development, uh, we need it, they need it. Everyone in city government needs it, and everyone in, in Michigan City, uh, needs it. And that is the entire purpose, to better communications and, uh, to improve training opportunities, uh, there. Mr. Myers, did you have something else to add?
No, no.
Okay, oh, I saw you lie out there. Uh, Councilman Tillman? Did you, or, or, uh, I meant to say, uh, Councilman Deitch?
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry. I didn't even, I didn't have anything. Well, I, I will set up some time and some meetings to, uh, for whatever council meeting, uh, members would like to participate. But all I'm talking about is just meeting etiquette, Zoom etiquette, um, Robert's Rules of Order, um, just some basic items, some templates for meeting minutes that maybe some of the boards, um, don't have, uh, just more of a resource and providing some additional resources to the board. And also, um, kind of doing an audit too of the boards and the boards that we have, the select committees that we have. I mean, you know, how many, you know, meetings are had in the year? Are there committees that are really meeting? Those kind of things, so, um, open for input for that.
Thank you very much. The oldest, uh, saying I had back in my retail days was inspect what you expect. And if you're not inspecting it, you shouldn't have no expectation. So, um, next up, uh, unfinished business. Uh, the council has eight nomination or appointments to the commission of social status of African-American males. Um, The uh only letter that was received in the clerk's office was from the Swanson Center reappointing Mr. Willie Millsap. Uh I am uh desiring uh more people to uh apply. There's nothing else we can do on that, though if any of the existing members are on here would like to, you know, continue, they would have to, they need to apply. Um the council has four appointments to the Urban Enterprise Association, incumbents. Tracy Tillman is a council appointment. Uh applications received uh currently are Esther Gunson, Keith Deveraux and Deborah Heisman. Uh do we want to uh entertain a motion to move those forward? Councilman Angie.
I would like to uh before uh entertain a motion, I'm just, I would like to state that um I hope this board starts meeting again in some capacity. Um these are um incumbent board members and I I really believe that this this particular board has funding that can really help some of these neighborhoods and they have not met in almost a year. So I'm not sure what's going on um with uh the board, I mean who the chair was. Um but I know that they had not met in a year. I don't know if we're up for a vote or if we're just up for nominations tonight, but I just wanted to make that comment. Um um cause I I I'm in support of one of the candidates if we decide to do them separately.
Uh Councilman Don Presblewski?
Yeah, Mr. President, I think we're just up for nominations tonight. We'll be voting in two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sound good. Um yes, ma'am.
Well, I nominate Esther Gunson.
I will second that.
Uh, yes, Councilman Don Presblewski.
Yeah, I uh nominate Keith Deveraux.
Second that.
Okay, well, uh.
And and uh.
Tracy Tillman.
You already got Tracy.
Oh, okay. Great. I I have a question. Uh I'm I'm sorry, can I jump in? I'm sorry, uh Allison, but um I see David Augustus's name down there.
Yes.
Uh I'll nominate David Augustus.
Do we have a second?
We didn't receive an application from him.
Okay.
Who was the third one that we received the application from?
The third one is Deborah Heisman and we received her application uh March of two thousand twenty. And I have never met her, so I don't. Does anybody know?
Well, we can uh move on to two that we have a motion and a second for at this time, right?
At our next meeting.
At our next meeting, okay.
I would like to, if I may, I would, can I uh nominate Willie Millsap since he's the Swanson Center's appointment uh to the social status tonight? Since he did, you know, he did get nominated or submitted. So I'd like to uh nominate Willie Millsap for the Commission on Social Status of African American Males.
We have a second. Yeah, we have a nomination by Mr. Presblewski and a second on by Sean Fitzpatrick for Willie Millsap. All in favor of the uh.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay, that's like, and ye- yes, ma'am.
So we didn't receive any, um I thought we received some information on some of the other social status. I I don't have, I'm in another state, so I don't have my material with me.
Um but I did, but I'm sorry. I did reach out to uh Latoya.
Okay.
Um and she said she was working on it.
Okay, I thought I just, I thought I saw uh some correspondence, so maybe I didn't. I thought we had additional people that we received correspondence for already.
If I may. I wanna say maybe a couple of months ago, um the council received a uh application um from a representative of the NAACP. It was a gentleman, but I can't recall his name at the moment.
Yep.
Trying to search for it.
Find it. Okay, uh where we at now? We're on, the uh council has four appointments to Urban Enterprise and the last one, council has one appointment to the Veterans Commission, term beginning immediately and expires twelve thirty one, twenty twenty four. Incumbent is Honey Anderson. And we have received an application from Ms. Anderson and she's the only application. All in favor?
I I nominate, I would like to nominate uh Ms. Anderson.
Second.
We have a nomination by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilman Preblewski.
Yep.
All in favor, signify by saying, oh, this is still the next meeting, right? Yeah, okay. Uh any comments from the public? Comments from? Any comments from the public? Comment, public comment is now closed. Any comments from the council?
President.
Paul Presblewski.
I would like to take this opportunity to let you guys know that at the next meeting I will be introducing a uh resolution and I'm gonna read it to you in its entirety right now. And I would like to thank Mr. Myers for uh preparing this under, from our discussions. Whereas uh requesting joint meetings with the Redevelopment Commission to discuss planning developments in and financial information regarding tax abatement, financial development districts and block the and the blocks of matter. Whereas the Common Council has responsibility and authority to monitor and adopt rules and policy regarding the city properties and city funds, including the properties and finance of the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission. And whereas the Redevelopment Commission is an executive department of the city responsible for fostering economic development in the city through, among other things, the use of tax increment financing revenues from properties in the city's tax increment financing districts in the transit transit development district, also known as TDD, related to Northwest Indiana Commuter Commuter Transportation District Double Track Project. And whereas in order to properly execute its above stated responsibility, the Common Council needs to know and understand the current status of finances of the city's TIF and TDD districts and the Redevelopment Commission's plans for use of those funds to foster economic development in the otherwise benefiting those districts. And whereas the Redevelopment Commission has been contacted, contacting, negotiating, is in current litigation with Bloxham regarding its factory and property along Trail Creek in Michigan City, the result of which could have a substantial adverse effect on the Redevelopment Commission finances so as to impair its ability to fulfill its responsibility to foster economic development in the city, including along Trail Creek, which is a matter of great concern to the Common Council. Now for, now therefore be it resolved by the Michigan City Common Council that it requests to have a joint meeting with the Redevelopment Commission, the mayor and the director of planning to discuss the status of finances of each of the city's TIF districts. The Redevelopment Commission's plans for the use of TIF funds to foster economic development in or otherwise for the benefit of those districts. To have a joint meeting of the same parties in executive session, if necessary, to discuss the current status of negotiations and litigation with Bloxham and the potential effect of the results of those negotiations or litigation on the Redevelopment Commission's finances and its ability to foster economic development along Mayor Creek, uh excuse me, along Trail Creek. So that'll be on the agenda at our next meeting and I wanted to give everybody a heads up. I wanted to thank Jim for putting that together. We had uh several discussions about this particular matter over the last couple of months and uh going forward, I think it's gonna help us out a lot. So also, I would like to say this comment is that I think it's unfortunate when council members impeach the others' position. And you can look that up, um because that is a council member's position. And I don't think that anybody has the right to to do that. And I hope that the president stays lenient with us and that we get to keep our open discussions and communications. And Mr. Mack, I I understand your position. I was president of the city council when I was on the city council and I had some cantankerous members. But we worked, we worked it out and but I just think we need to reflect on what somebody's saying when they get ready to say it. And and it's truly, I understand the uh definition of impeachment of another's position. So with that being said, I I appreciate that, Mr. Mack, and hope you stay lenient with us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh Councilman uh Tillman, Councilwoman Tillman.
Um yes, I just wanted to go back to um the question that was posed by Councilwoman Deitch. Um if there was any other members, any other applications uh for the social status. And me being the pack rat that I am, I keep everything. October eighteenth of twenty twenty to Michigan City Common Council, it reads, reappointment to the Michigan City Commissioner of the Social Status of African American Males by the NAACP. Effective immediately, we would like for Mr. Clarence Finney to represent the NAACP on the Michigan City Commission of Social Status of African American Males. And they provided his address sincerely, um uh West Scully, President, Lapeur County, NAACP Unit Three Zero Six One. And this was sent out to each council member, Mr. Finney and the Chair, Michigan City Commissioner of the Social Status of African American Males.
Was it sent to the clerk's office?
Um.
I would have sent it out.
Yeah.
I would have had to have a resignation letter from whoever they were replacing.
That is correct. I have not received any resignations or was notified of any resignations other than this email.
Well.
I will forward this on to you.
Thank you.
Uh Councilman Don Preblewski?
Yeah, thank you, President Mack. I just wanna uh give a shout out to some exceptional police officers that have done some exceptional work in the last couple of weeks. And it's been, it was on the front page of the uh paper. Uh the first one was the five officers, uh and each one of these officers received the Exceptional Service Award for their actions on a call back in November twenty sixth. On Lapeur County Sheriff's Department Office, they received a call of gunshots being fired uh in seven thousand block of North County Road Five Hundred North. And I don't know specifically where that's at. Uh but anyway, the Michigan City Police Department officers, Ben and Tim Richardson and Captain Mike Oberly. Uh we were off duty and they both responded. And then there were three other officers that assisted, Officer Brian Wright, DeShawn Harris and Jacob Scheller. And these five police officers searched for this offender in the dark while putting their lives on the line and being shot at. So each one of the officers received that award, which is great. And and just a couple of days ago, there was a couple of police officers, a couple of guys, it looks like they maybe just joined the force. Uh they both received the life, or one received a lifesaving award and the other one won uh won the uh a letter of accommodation for helping a gentleman that had cut his arm with a circular saw. And it sounded to me in the paper that this gentleman was bleeding to death. And when they arrived, they both assisted this gentleman and I, one of the officers put a tourniquet on this gentleman's arm and probably saved his life. So I just wanna give a shout out to those seven police officers for going above and beyond the uh call of duty and protecting Michigan City and even people out in the county. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Uh Councilman Deitch.
Yeah, real quick, just wanted to kinda give a update after two thousand twenty. Uh you know, everybody's got questions about the Riverboat and the the dollars that we have in that fund. That's always a discussion uh in our meetings and Finance Committee. Um last year, uh we started the year with about one point six million dollars in Riverboat Fund. We ended up and got a report on uh December thirtieth, if I'm not mistaken, that was the date the report was run. Had about two point nine million uh dollars in that fund. Uh I'm looking over the page right now. I don't think that counts uh counts for the million dollars. That'll be taken out to the uh rainy day fund, but we have two point nine million dollars left in the uh Riverboat Fund. So just wanted to update the public on that. Uh a couple of other things I I think we're gonna need to look at going forward. We've hired more code enforcement officers out there and they're out uh writing a lot of citations, a lot of citations. Um so we're gonna need to start thinking about possibly getting some help down in our legal office at some point because, you know, with all these citations coming in, it creates a bottleneck. And the uh the legal office, those have to be processed as as tickets when they're, you know, citations are written for people. So that's gonna come down the line and maybe it's pre, pre uh talk for budget coming up down the line. But, you know, I I think we need to start thinking about that right now. Um and then one thing I've been 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 going and and uh President Mack, you and I have talked about this. Um we're getting developers that are coming into Michigan City developing condos, houses, housing complexes, whatever you wanna call them. And I'm thinking that we need to start asking for something in return. Um I I think we need to start asking for money that can go into a fund that can then be used to start helping rehabilitate houses throughout the neighborhoods. Uh we have the community development block grant, but that is very restricted. It is very slow. Um we're no longer in a position where we're begging folks to come here. People are wanting to come here. Reaching out uh to Clarence Holes and and down to the planning office and they wanna come into Michigan City. So I think we need to really start thinking about getting something in return that we can then uh use. Like uh somebody's talking about uh they use the term or the phrase, start putting money into these these neighborhoods. Um so I think that's something we're gonna start thinking about and I'm sure, like I said, I I talked with you, Councilman Mack, and I'm sure Councilwoman Nelson Bice has been been thinking about these same type of things. You guys are gonna be on the, on the uh redevelopment as voting members now. Uh so I think we'll get a chance to to do some things like that. So hopefully uh we can start moving in that direction. Um to get some things done here in uh this upcoming year. Thanks. Thanks.
Uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Jigus?
I, real quick, I would just like to commend the, uh, Sustainability Commission for getting recycling bins all over the parks in the city, hopefully they can expand even further. I believe it was Daisy Lee's project, so I think that was just awesome that they got that done, I know it took a long time. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Dyke?
Yeah, just to, to, um, uh, Councilman Dabney made me think of it, but, um, we've already, um, reached out to legal to, uh, see what we can do along those lines and, and setting up some type of fund and for that, for those kind of things already. Um, so we reached out a few weeks ago, um, uh, in that regard. Um, as we've had those discussions, there, there are a lot of models, um, across the United States that do that. Um, specifically with projects, um, I've had an opportunity, um, from being on EDC too, I've met with a couple of developers that have been interested in coming to town, but, um, the thing is, um, again, in other, other cities and communities, they have no problem providing assistance to our neighborhood, in, in neighborhoods, but I think it's just a matter of us asking. So, um, I asked, uh, Skylar York to reach out to, um, our, our, uh, attorney for just that thing, to see, you know, what opportunities can we have to support, uh, like, uh, Councilman Mack has said, you know, local organizations or maybe we have a field house. Maybe it's something, I don't know what that looks like, but other communities have done it over time. And, um, I think we have a, a great opportunity to do something for our kids. I mean, we don't have anything for our Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts and other places I've lived. They have camps, they have, you name it, is there. And we, we have, we are in such a great location for those items. And, uh, I think it's just a wonderful opportunity that, um, we have to see what we, what's legal though, to do. So that's why, um, he's going down that path to make sure that's, that's an option that we can actually, um, participate in and creating some type of matching dollar fund so that we can get money in the neighborhood. So, I, you, you know, I think it's a wonderful opportunity. Um, I will say this, um, I appreciate, um, all of the comments and, and like I said, with the boards and commissions, I, I just think we have a wonderful opportunity. You know, a lot of us are sitting on these calls, um, video calls. I'm on calls from 6:30 in the morning until like now, right now. And, you know, Zoom etiquette and, um, you, you, it's just like a regular meeting except for you're on video and we just need to make sure that, um, you know, people only know what they know and technology, some people, uh, we have boards and commission, uh, commissioners, um, that, uh, are not as savvy and, and maybe we need to take the time to help them and show them, you know, how to, um, utilize the technology. Some don't have computers that maybe is, you know, have the speed or up to date or the proper internet and I don't want to take that for granted with our citizens who are, um, who are donating their time, um, and volunteering their time. So I just think we need to make, make it as, um, easy, um, as we can for, for them to participate. So, um, I just wanted to, to say that and, uh, and hopefully, um, moving forward, we'll be able to assist any way we, that we can and, and support them. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Don Preblewski?
Yeah, one more short comment, talking about these developers, uh, coming to town and possibly getting help, uh, from them. And just as I've been, I spoke to, uh, Angie and, you know, uh, Michael at the two council meetings ago and I spoke at the last Redevelopment Commission meeting, uh, to get play, play, get playground Washington Park. I mean, what a fantastic project for a developer to come into town and say, okay, you can do this. Here's what we, this is what we'd like you to do, is to put playground equipment down here in Washington Park and get it taken care of. Then when we get done with that park, then we'll go to this park, then we're going to go to that park. And I know that President Mack is all about recreation and, uh, having things for children, you know, children to do, teenagers to do, what have you. But that's, just an idea and that idea is not going to die because I am going to keep that idea in front of the Redevelopment Commission and in front of the park board until it gets done. Thank you.
Okay, and in closing, I'm just going to piggyback off that, uh, I call it all in on the MC residents. I've got my particular, uh, vein of training and development of, uh, young people, but I believe everyone, every department, every interested party in Michigan City should, and if I've got any say, so they will carry their weight on this subject of, uh, training and development and, uh, Michigan City residents and especially our youth. I've also got the utmost confidence in every single one of you, professionally, personally, and in your desire to see MC move forward. Uh, there's absolutely no doubt in my mind that this group can do large things and, uh, larger than we even imagine and we can inspire the rest of the city to, uh, go much, uh, do, do much more themselves. I was a track coach that moved by a track for six years with my son where the, uh, Special Olympics and the regular, uh, athletes meet and they, uh, represent the schools and that was some of the most inspirational stuff I've seen in my life. And when you see people with true disabilities, uh, getting cheered on and when you see these children that has, uh, the, the overcoming obstacles, uh, it just puts me in the mind that there's no excuse for adult, well-educated, well-meaning people not to succeed. So with that, uh, I have high expectations for us all. And, uh, thank you all and, uh, let's, let's get it done for MC and the residents. Have a good night, meeting adjourned.
I wish you too.
Most.
Meeting adjourned.
No move.
No move, thank you. Good night.
Bye.